So unless I hear concerns from you, you will probably see a policy review at the next meeting with the results of your work. If you feel like there's things that they need to rethink, then I need to hear from you so that we can have the committee do more work to based on the conversation tonight. It seems like we'll bring that to you for a brief review at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll move on to the board open discussion.
So, Madam President, if I can start off, first I'd like to thank Dr. Hannigan for taking time to look into this issue and come and address the board tonight. I want to review a couple of things in terms of the proposal that Mr. Stillian's brought forward and the process that was, that we went through here. And also note that none of the, the recommendation wasn't arrived at based on any one single factor. Certainly, this is a complex issue and a little background information may be appropriate. So, the transportation system that we have in our, in our school districts has been in place over thirty years. It, it was originally done as an effort to make our system more efficient. It staggers the routes that buses that we use to pick up our students. And it does that so that in an effort to reduce the number of bus drivers and the number of buses necessary. Other districts send buses out, pick up all their kids, bring them back to a central point. Everybody gets off the bus, gets on the bus that's going to their school. When everybody's back on the bus, then they go back out to their schools. Dodge City is an example of a system that uses a transportation system like that. Takes more drivers and more buses because all of your kids are on the bus at the same exact time. Our stagger, when, when the system was developed, was based primarily on geography. So, if you notice, if you're on a school, if you're in an elementary school, on the eastern side of town, those are our earliest starting schools. As you move across town to the east, I'm sorry, to the west, you get to our, to our latest school. So, our earliest elementary school right now is Victor Dallas that starts at seven forty. And, well, and Jimmy Barker starts at seven thirty-five. And, and moves across to, to Edith Charman, who starts at, at eight, at eight forty. And releases at four o'clock. So, the, this, a number of things have changed since that system was put into place. The first thing is, we have two intermediate centers that were opened in nineteen ninety-six that were, that were not considered in the original design of that system. We have a new high school, so we have an additional school in the mix. We also have a new early childhood center. And up until two thousand twelve, our early childhood students were all contained in, in our elementary schools, and so they were taken to school at those locations, whereas now, we have a separate location for those. So, the point being, the system has been in place for thirty years, and it, it may, may be reaching the functional end of its life in order to be efficient. Mr. Stillian started as Transportation Director close to two years ago, and prior to that, he had background in our district as an Assistant Principal. So, he was very familiar with transportation from the consumer standpoint. Not only did he know what transportation should do, but he had experienced the goods and the bads of what happened when transportation was working well and what happened when transportation was not working well. And I think his ability to bring that to the, to the situation was very helpful. About four or five months into his, six months into his capacity as Transportation Director, he came to me with some ideas about improving the efficiency of the system. The goal for this all along has been to provide the best possible support for our students, the best possible transportation system for all of our students, grades pre-K up through twelve. There, there was no committee. When Mr. Stillian brought forward his ideas, I asked him to put together a group of principals to share his ideas with, to gain perspective on and, and an understanding of what issues would be created at the various levels. So, he addressed the pre-K through the high school level with principals who could, who could give firsthand feedback on the challenges, the pitfalls, and the improvements that the proposals would address. After several rounds with principals about what made sense, Mr. Stillian came up with a couple of options. One option was for the secondary schools to start later and the elementary schools to start earlier. The second option was for the secondary schools to start early and the elementary schools to start late, the times being about seven fifty and about eight thirty. He, he put those into the two proposals, and those were then shared with all the principals in the district. And those principals were asked to go back to their schools and through their site councils, which are advisory boards of parents in our district, to share those ideas and solicit feedback as to what issues would be created, what issues would be solved. That feedback was given back to Mr. Stillian. The, the principals also shared, were asked to share that information with their building leadership teams and with their faculties. And that information all came back to Mr. Stillian in the form of feedback to help fine-tune, revise, and select which of those proposals make the most sense. That all happened last school year, and in the, in the spring, we had a lot going on. We had some issues with our alternative calendar ideas. We, and we ended up basically tabling, putting on hold the, the discussion so we could be transparent, so we could make sure that we thoroughly vetted the ideas and there wasn't confusion around those. This year, once the school year got going, we put together that group of principals again and looked at those fine-tuned proposals. I think Mr. Stillian may have made a few more adjustments and again, sent that recommendation out, or what, I guess determined a recommendation, and then sent that recommend, what that recommendation would be, out to principals prior to it being considered by the Board of Education, and asked them, again, to share that with their staff and any groups they saw fit. And then it was discussed at the March sixth Board of Education meeting. It was covered, I believe, in the local media. And as the board typically does, on issues where public input may have an impact on their decision, they try not to make that decision at one meeting. And so, it was then back on the agenda after a meeting on April third. And at that point, and as, as Dr. Hannigan acknowledged, unfortunately, he wasn't able to provide his input at that time. But the board carefully considered all of the information that they had at that point and then made the decision to approve the recommended proposal. I will share with you some of the benefits of the proposal. Again, not any one of these is, is the reason for doing it, but there are a number of benefits and there are a number of issues that it creates. There, there is, currently, we don't have a perfect schedule or system, and when we're done with this, we won't have a perfect schedule or system. But it, it, it will make things better. First, this schedule will keep all but the farthest students on buses for shorter periods of time. We have some students that live out in the county that, where they live, it's going to be a long trip to get into school. And I think generally, people in that situation understand that the choice they make in, in where they, where they live will have an impact on that. This proposal will streamline transportation by allowing them to handle force-outs at the elementary level and door-to-door at both levels more efficiently. The, the various start times create some real challenges when we don't have room in some of our elementary schools for the kids that would, we would otherwise normally serve there. The same driver will pick up and take students home each day. This will allow drivers to build relationships with students and staff at the, and, at those schools in which they serve. That's something that we haven't been able to do in our district with the current system very often. The schedule will ensure that buses are not running behind unless it's due to something outside of their control. Right now, if you're one of those schools that starts early, you probably don't know a whole lot, notice a whole lot of disruption in your transportation service. But if you're one of those at the end of the chain, since everything's staggered, it's not unusual for buses to be twenty or sometimes thirty minutes behind due to things outside of their control. And those things could vary from, one of the schools along the way was running behind and didn't have their students out on time, to maybe there's a traffic accident, the bus has to take a different route, maybe they get caught in traffic at a particular school. So, there's a number of reasons why that happens in our current system. The schedule will limit the times that secondary and elementary students are on the same bus. Right now, we have some, some times where we have juniors and seniors on, on the bus with kindergarten and first grade students. While, while we very seldom have an issue with any kind of bullying or anything like that with the older kids and the younger kids, I think we do have parents who routinely feel their kids get a vocabulary lesson based on the conversations going that they wish wouldn't happen until those students were a little bit older. And that's very difficult for a bus driver to regulate on a bus that has four or 50 Garfield Early Childhood Center will now be able to, their schedule will, will work much better in this system and they will fit within the school day now. There will be an allowance for buffer times between schools, which will help keep our buses on schedule. Secondary students will be able to pick up younger siblings at the elementary and intermediate Major changes will be made in three schools and not fourteen or fifteen. And major changes being changes in the time greater than thirty minutes. Again, although the primary purpose of this proposal was not to reduce costs, I think it is important to note that if we continue with our current system and we continue to grow in our enrollment and we continue to have the need for force-outs at our schools, we will, we will need additional drivers. We will have added expenses at transportation moving forward. I learned today, and I didn't know this before today, that most of the year, we've had two of our mechanics driving routes this year to, to create additional routes in addition to the thirty-three routes and route driving positions that we have in the district. And we don't generally like to do that. That's not a very efficient use of, of a mechanic's time or a, or some, I think, some of Mr. Stillian's office personnel also have CDLs, but they have regular jobs to do. Lastly, this puts all schools on the same schedule, and that'll help us some with professional development for teachers and give elementary teachers more opportunity to collaborate. Right now, if we're going to have a meeting that involves all third grade teachers in the district, some of our schools are out at two fifty-five and some aren't out until four o'clock. So, that, that, that becomes problematic. So, Madam President, I, I realize this is a, there's not a perfect answer. Dr. Hannigan, again, I appreciate your time. The, the adolescent sleep information was one of the considerations that was discussed. And there, there's, was not a way that became apparent that could meet all of the needs and that consequently, and looking at the pros and the cons, the recommendation was to proceed as, as came to the board. So, I, I get that there may be room to continue to disagree there, but that was the, that's the background information as I understand it.
One of the points that had been raised was this concern about looking down the road in this sort of discussion we're having on the high school for zero hour and possibly even an eighth hour. And, and I know whenever we make these kinds of adjustments on things like start times for schools and the seventh period day at the high school, there's, we've had some sort of energy put into the possibilities for adjustment. And so, the, the point that was brought up, or the concern that was brought up about the eighth hour not maybe even happening, I, I guess I just want to say, I, I hope that doesn't occur. And I certainly want to keep watching that because I know the value, as we make some of these adjustments, to, to flexibility to the extent we can for the teachers and for the students. That's clearly before us as a, as a intention, and it's part of the innovation possibilities here at the high school. So, I just want to make sure as a board we keep thinking in terms of not dropping that one. We're very early in the process, but I think that holds a tremendous amount of merit, not only for, it depends on how they implement it at their high school, but not only for core curriculum, but also for the possibilities for additional electives now that we've got in the center.
And, and Mark, that's a great point. And I will assure you that there will be eighth hour classes. Mr. Nordby and I have already had that conversation. Now, some of that will be driven by what the student interest is, but he's working with counselors right now to help kind of determine what that interest level is. But this is something that we will be offering in some form next year. And I believe going forward, it'll be, the, the amount of classes and the types of classes will ultimately be driven by the interest of the students.
Athletic times is related to start time for their practices. If this, finish time for school is going to be.
I don't, I don't know. I, that's, I haven't had any conversations about what this will do with the athletic times. I would be speculating.
First of all, Dr. Hannigan, before you start speaking tonight, you apologize for coming to us late and feel, you know, I, I apologize to you for not trying to give more apparent input. I think our job, in my opinion, is to seek out input from community people and tell them and ask them questions about things that we're planning on doing. You know, Dr. Carlin and the board president, I, I voiced my concerns about this, this time change before board meetings last time. And I, you know, if we continue down this path that we voted, you know, I'd really like to see at least a handful, four or five items that we're going to really track that this is a good policy that we developed. And I, I don't know what those are, you know. Definitely party news, you know, if the party news go up or our grades go down because they're tired when they get to school. Those are two that just come up, probably, but, you know, maybe if we can develop a, a check sheet or, these are the things we're going to look at, and if we're failing at all, six of them or five of them are out, we decide, then maybe we need to repress our, our thinking on this was a good idea. And I don't know what those are, maybe as a board, we can, we can talk about, you know, key things that we want to look at on this policy as, is it good or is it bad? And if they're all good, then, you know, we need to look where it is, but I, I still have, in the back of my mind, I, I don't think this is the right thing, but we do vote, and I'll stand behind that.
Well, Tim, thanks for the comments. I think Mrs. Flipper asked that we bring back to the board some information. And I know Mr. Stillian is already looking for, at this standpoint, what information that he can track and bring back, show that, that this is going to have hard data, I guess if you will, and Mr. Nordby, we will be working with Mr. Nordby to do the same kind of thing. So, the idea and I, you know, there's people that, what we're doing right now doesn't work very well. And they may be pleased to see some changes. And there's people that things are working well for, and this is what they're used to. And so, we're not going to have a perfect system that's going to make everybody happy. But our number one goal here is to take care of our kids the best way we can. And we'll be happy to bring that information back.
I, I think my biggest concern is that, I know I tried to go out and talk to parents to try to get them to put in before the vote. We talked at several board faculty meetings about this potential change, both last year and this year. But to hear from so many parents that they didn't know that this was happening is really concerning, concerning to me. So, and one of our board goals is better communication with the community. So, what I'm wondering is, what could we have done better to get this information out? And I think, I ran into Jane yesterday, I think we talked about doing a radio spot-on or something like that. I know Lori has time when he goes, I don't know if maybe one or two of you could discuss this, but if we're looking at something with regard to this, maybe we need to utilize that more effectively as well. I don't know if there was something that we could have done on our Facebook page or Twitter feed, maybe get some of those things out as well. I mean, I know ABS was here, I know we have the YouTube here, but what else, what, what else could we have done to get this information out so people could have been there at the last meeting to voice their concerns or voice that they were unsupported, whichever way? But that was the most concerning.
Just one little side note on a different topic that was presented tonight, our homework. You know, and you touched on it. It's such a challenge, I know, for each teacher to not only work with their curriculum and their classes and their, and that, you know, thinking now, particularly on high school and trying to communicate. But one of the things that always sort of was frustrating, I think, to my students was when there's homework assigned and then they don't receive. But I can think back to my own career, even in college, where you have assignments made and never getting feedback, whether you did it right or didn't do it right. So, that's just one of those notes and a whole list of things that that committee did such a great job of reviewing and will want to be published in another way, policy. But I certainly would hope and encourage that policy to have some statement in there that, that the benefit of that homework includes the feedback from the, from the teacher to the student. And that delayed effect is just devastating, I think, from a standpoint of fact of, of the student has to go into other resources to try and find some kind of feedback on whether they did it right or how well they did it.
Just one more comment, Tim.
Yeah.
Going back to you, Dr. Carlin, and listen to Laura. You know, I really believe we failed to let the community know that we were going to do this change. Granted, we, we made the decision. We now need to do a better job in, in forming the community of the change so that when school time comes, they can't say they didn't know.
Absolutely.
We, we need to really get on that by going to the civil, civic duty clubs and talking saying, these are the changes that are coming next year, our homework policy, recommendations, you know, those things, we need, because when I thought about our vote last time, I think Jennifer made the comment that she was surprised that there weren't parents here to talk about it. And as I went home, I thought, well, how did, how could they have even known? If you don't get the newspaper or watch our TV channel, we didn't tell anybody else. On my block, there's eight people, only two of us get the newspaper. So, the newspaper articles did the sift that don't get it any good. And if you don't watch our TV station, which I don't know who does, they're not going to know. So, I think those are the only two.
We all do.
You know, now, the teachers, we went to the teachers and told them, you know, we could easily have sent out a note at the high school with the iPad and say, these are the things we're going to be talking about, let your parents know, let your parents know how you feel. I, I just think we did a bad job in forming the community on that big change. And that's just my personal opinion. And I think, at this point, we need to tell them that this is what we're looking at. It's been voted on, and they need, they need to know. Don't you agree?
Absolutely. And Mr. Cessna and I have been working with our principals. We have, every, every student, every elementary student does pre-enrollment, and the plan is to share this information with all of our students and families when they go through pre-enrollment. If they come in after pre-enrollment, if they're from out of the district, they'll do that here. So, there is a plan to make sure that everybody is aware that these changes are happening.
Okay, thanks.
I want just a quick comment. I think what I'm left with at, at this point is, when, when we had the homework presentation, you had two pages of research at your presentation. And I can see the frustration that there's research out there and it doesn't feel like we paid attention. So, I feel like there's not maybe consistency in that. I, I went back out and I looked at the studies and I still feel comfortable with the decision, but I think that is something that we need to become more consistent with, is that, you know, really evaluating and, I don't know, like, making it more consistent. When are we going to follow the research and when we're not or why we're not, just to go along with what Tim was saying, so.
I have something, but I, it's a different topic, so.
Well, I'm still on the.
Okay.
But go ahead.
No, go.
I realize that there's no perfect solution to transportation, but, but I also see that the, the problems that we have with transportation were affecting a relatively small percentage of our student population. I mean, it, it wasn't everybody who was being transported and not everybody who comes to our school utilizes transportation. So, I, I appreciate that we were trying to remedy a problem for that smaller group of students. But I think in doing so, we expanded the scope of the solution to impact every student. And when that happened, what was originally sort of an internal group who made that recommendation would now have every student affected, every parent, every staff member. Perhaps we need to expand the, the group that was making, was considering what plan would be best. When I, when I looked at the number of people on the homework committee list and thought homework affects everybody, and they probably had, I don't know, thirty people up there with representation from parents and lots of staff members, and, and did five meetings with a lot of research, I was pretty impressed that, that the results that are coming from that group have been well considered and are probably pretty appropriate for trying to address that problem. So, I really liked that process. But I think that we dropped the ball on, on the transportation issue or the school start time issues, because it started out as a transportation and then it kind of morphed into school start times being effective. But I would also say, this, this decision was made two weeks ago. It wasn't very long ago, and we really haven't had a great deal of time to turn up an entire change to do that. I, I think we had very little input from the community in making our decision. I don't see that it is unreasonable to, to request additional input from the community If we maintain this decision, I believe that we really have to have further review and further input into seeing how it will work. But I don't see that necessarily maintaining it the way it is is absolutely required. I think there, I feel like a lot of our decisions, they really need to just go forward from when we make that. But in terms of the scope of this decision, I don't see that it would be unreasonable to reconsider it, to alter it, to further discuss it. And if we do maintain it, I believe not to continue to receive input and continue to work at it to see if it's really working. If it just affects, when you have something that affects everybody, trying to fix something that affects a few people, it needs more community, but it needs more staff input. It's pretty concerning to me to have high school staff members concerned about how their children, if they would have to be away, all their children and stuff, as well as the community members that are here. And those who aren't here are concerned about this. I just wanted to bring that up for any discussion that anyone would like to have, that that might be one.
Because, at least for me personally and as a board member, I didn't weigh this decision lightly at all, but I feel like we've looked at a lot of the negatives at the time as board members, but I, I think there's positives out there too. And Dr. Hannigan has kids in the high school level, and there was a lot mentioned on that, on how it will be hurting them or inconvenient for them. And I just want to point out from the K through six level, having younger kids that, and younger kids that have been starting school at seven thirty-five, seven forty in the morning, that it's important for them to get that kind of sleep too. And I know that it's only three elementary schools in the district that have that issue, but those kids that are getting on the bus at six in the morning to get there at seven fifteen have evening activities too. And those evening activities start at the same time for every level, so if you have kids in evening activities that start at seven, it's going to be for those kids that have to go to school at seven fifteen and for those kids that have to go at eight thirty, which is the way it is right now. And I didn't hear any mention on how much sleep that level of kid needs. So I just think, we're talking about statistics and needing sleep, we need to look at the pre-K up to the twelfth grade level because all our kids are important. And just, I just want to keep that in mind because we have the statistics there talking about how much sleep our high school kids need and we're not thinking about our little ones. And I think that's important too. And another thing Dr. Hannigan had mentioned is the sports travel time. And I think that's an issue to think about, but I don't think the start time of the day is necessarily where that solution is. That's a, that's a travel issue. And we're a six A school, and if we're going to be a six A high school, we're going to have to travel three to four hours to go compete. And if we were a smaller high school, maybe we wouldn't have to travel as far. I know there's not a solution to that, but that's just if we're competing with some of the smaller schools close to our area, we could be also like, I think our academics would be our priority. And then another thing is the length of the day. I don't know if it's been pointed out, K through six levels go to school a little bit longer than the upper levels due to the recess time. Their instruction time is the same, but the length of the day is a little bit longer. And that's a lot for little kids. It's a lot for big kids too, but we just need to include that kind of stuff in mind too. I just want to make sure the focus on making this decision is K through twelve or pre-K through twelve and not just upper levels. There are some good things about this decision, but there's going to be some challenges too. And I know there may have been a communication issue, what we're trying to say. But speaking for myself and hopefully our other board members, we got, I got out there and tried to talk to as many people as I could, staff, parents at different levels. And it takes both sides of the table. Hopefully, here we can work to communicate more with the community, but also as a parent and a community member, make sure you're involved and know what's going on because I think that's important if you're not sure. And that's what's happening tonight, when you find out that there's something that concerns you, you're here. So I appreciate that. I was disappointed last time that there weren't any parents here or even staff or community members. And so I'm glad that you're here now that when you became concerned and had an issue that you jumped right in and expressed your opinion. So thank you, and thank you for taking the time to call us over the latest. We appreciate that.
May I address the board? Is that okay?
Sure.
I'm a parent of two Plymouth students, so my kids start school early. So I understand where you say they need more time to sleep, but we are also a farming community where they have chores and things that they need to do after school. I, we live near country, these are things my kids do. If they don't get out of school till four o'clock or after, that cuts into those times plus activities. Also, I know my husband emailed all the school members, board members, plus Mr. Carlin and Mr. Stillian. My husband goes to work at six o'clock, I go to work at seven thirty. How do you expect a ten and seven-year-old to get themselves on the bus? They are now starting school at seven forty and get out at two fifty-five. With the new plan, they will start at, they will be there at seven fifty for breakfast, don't start until eight thirty. That is a longer school day for younger children. So it's not really helping with less, more sleep. Also, the teachers aren't, don't have to be there. So they either have to be there and not get paid for it, or there's children running around the school doing whatever. And let's face it, elementary school kids, they're going to do whatever they can get away with. So I see the other side of the kids starting early. It's not always a bad thing. Do my kids have to go to bed at eight thirty? Yes. When they start school at eight thirty, they're still going to go to bed at eight thirty. It doesn't matter what time they're starting. I, I feel very strongly about this. Thank you.
Dr. Carlin, if we, if we delay our action on our board, how long can we go, delay it? What is the deadline date that says we have to tell parents that we're going to start at different times?
In normal, it's the first Thursday.
And we've already had our pre-meeting with the schools to arrange that, so if, I think if the board wants to delay this, it's not going to happen next year.
Again, Spence said that, I know we spent a fair amount of time as a board, not only relying on the discussions that we had, but also on, I think, at least for myself, the expectation that if we try this on and we made a mistake, we're be changing. And we won't know whether we really made a mistake in the decision, I think, until we try it. Given the weight and the extent of the discussions of the other challenges that we were trying to address, I think of this. But, I mean, if the board's pleasure is to delay this, then so be it. But my point is that if we try this for a year and it really is not for this community, my expectation is that we'll have the data gathered and we'll have a better basis.